I don't know if you know, it's really much.
On July the fifteenth, twenty twenty five, and as usual, it's a beautiful night in Garner, and a beautiful crowd here tonight. Thank you for coming. It's always encouraging to look out and see so many interested and committed faces here. Great citizens, great participation. Thank you for coming. That being said, let's move right along to the roll call. We'll list the town clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Gupta.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer. Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
And Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we have the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. I'm going to call on Councilmember Kathy Behringer.
Join me with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would join me for the invocation, if you wish. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight humbly, asking for your guidance. We thank you for your blessings, but we don't want to leave that out. But we ask you for your guidance as we address the issues and concerns before us this evening. And we also want to remember all of the people around the country that are having problems with flooding and loss of life and loss of homes. Just be merciful to those people, care for them, and help them find their way. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Behringer. At this point, we're at the petitions and comments section, and I'll list our town attorney if anyone has signed up to speak this evening.
Yes, one individual has signed up to speak.
Okay. Well, we're glad to have you here this evening, and we always read this little disclaimer. We always read this little disclaimer here. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items that are not included in this agenda regarding matters that are germane to town policies or business or subjects within the town council's real or apparent jurisdiction. Individuals or group spokespersons must sign up with the town clerk prior to the start of the meeting. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but will not take action or deliberate on the subject matter brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for future agenda. And I see the person who's signed up has already come to the podium. No, no, you're way ahead of schedule. Keep us moving. And with that, would you please introduce yourself with name and address?
Kathleen Downer de Carthanas, one six zero nine, South Wade Avenue, Garner, North Carolina. Thank you for allowing me to speak. On Saturday, the nonpartisan, multi-issue group of religious congregations and other nonprofits in Wake County, called One Wake, gathered to address the crisis of affordable housing. Holding the data of a sixty-five-thousand-unit affordable housing deficit in Wake County and looking at the faces of over a thousand residents who squeezed into the sanctuary and two overflow rooms at Watts Chapel, leaders of the organization asked for progress on previous commitments to affordable housing. Then they asked for commitments to addressing the growing need of affordable housing. It was a beautiful display of unity, demonstrating the recognition that housing is a key issue for residents of our community. The problem was it focused on Raleigh when we all know that each municipality has both the need and the responsibility to take action. As residents of Garner, we are concerned about our neighbors. We are concerned about our neighborhoods. On Saturday, sorry, on Sunday, our church message was the story of the Good Samaritan. We cannot turn a blind eye to the needs of our neighbors. So I applaud the steps that have been taken. Mr. Dellinger, who is on the research subcommittee with me for the task force on affordable housing, spoke up in the last budget meeting about the need to set aside funding for storm water retention. My friend Bill, who lives in Chapel Hill, said to me on Friday, make sure you point out what happened to homes in Chapel Hill, what happened to homes in Chapel Hill in the last storm. Ms. Behringer met with me recently to learn about how to find data about the housing crisis. Mr. Vance was the chair of the Affordable Housing Task Force that spent seven months researching. Our task force produced an eighteen-page document with nine recommendations. And Mr. Singleton has shown great support and commitment to the need for affordable housing, looking for opportunities for partnerships, researching possible town-owned land, and committing to vote against a budget that did not include a full-time town staff member for affordable housing. One key piece of data highlighted in the meeting on Saturday was the recent approval of a two-hundred-and-seventy-five-million-dollar bond for the city of Raleigh Parks and Rec. The political leaders were asked if considering the housing crisis, they would commit to a two-hundred-million-dollar bond for affordable housing. It made me think about Garner. Our budget passed last month with a three-to-two vote. It included eleven full-time staff for the Jürgen Park project, but refused to commit even one single full-time staff for affordable housing. It was said that money could be made available if there was a need. So today, we have a group here to tell you that the state recognizes the need, as I have sent you many emails with data. The county recognizes the need, as One Wake's meeting with over a thousand people on Saturday demonstrated. And Garner residents, who many are standing here today, recognize the need. As our neighbors have come to express today, I know this is not a time for you to respond, so I won't ask you, but at risk of sounding too religious, as I think about Sunday's message, I will ask, what would Jesus do? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and thank you for sticking to the limit. Thank all of you who have turned out and your courtesy by having one spokesperson and showing your support by being here in person. We greatly appreciate your cooperation. Thank you. At this point, we move to adoption of the agenda. And at this point, I believe council members have had a chance to look over the agenda. If we see no need to make a change, I will accept a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved?
Second?
Moved by Mr. Matthews, second by Mr. Vance. If there's no discussion, I'll call for a voice vote. All in favor of adopting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, the agenda is adopted. At this point, it's my pleasure to move along to presentations. We have a very special presentation this evening. It has to do with the Coming Home Foundation. We were fortunate enough that a number of the council members were able to go just a couple of weeks ago to see the groundbreaking, the ribbon-cutting. Well, I guess it's the groundbreaking on the hero homes that's being built here in Garner. And with that, I'm going to introduce Mr. Paul Kane, the Secretary of Operation Coming Home Foundation. If you would, give us a little information about the history of your organization and what we've done in the past.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all members of this esteemed council. I'm Paul Kane. I'm the CEO for the Home Builders Association of Raleigh-Wake County, but I also wear the hat of being corporate secretary for Operation Coming Home. And on the heels of a very impassioned plea for affordable housing in Garner, I'm pleased to tell you that I'm here to talk about a free home for a severely injured U.S. Army Green Beret. Operation Coming Home was started in two thousand eight. It's a five-oh-one-C-three charity that has a history of building homes for severely injured veterans who were injured while serving our country, as well as building homes for Gold Star families, the surviving families of the fallen soldiers. I was before this council in two thousand eighteen to ask for support of Hero Home Twenty Three that was being built here in Garner. It was the first hero home in Garner under this program, and this council very generously supported that program. So, over the years, we have built twenty-eight homes. Almost all of them are built here in the Triangle. One of them was built over by Charlotte, but we're never going to do that again. But we're proud to be a locally-based charity that is providing for the heroes of our area. The span of the different heroes that we provided homes for is just amazing. And they're all provided by builders that are here in our county. The builders step up. They provide the material, the labors, all of their trade partners step up and offer to either fully provide their labor and materials for free, and if not free, at a significant discount. The homes are then delivered at what we call the key ceremony, mortgage-free, for this hero of our country to live their lives and to be a member of this community. At this point, I'd like to invite all of you to the key ceremony, which will be on Veterans Day, November eleventh. Now, we do understand that the town has a very exciting Veterans Day celebration planned for that morning, so we're going to have our ceremony in the afternoon. That'll be one P.M., and I'll make sure that the actual invite is sent to the town and distributed to all of you. I'd really love to see all of you there. So that's a little bit about what Operation Coming Home is. I'd now like to turn the microphone over to Andy Ladner with U.S. Veterans Corps. And I guess I should explain. Operation Coming Home is really a partnership between the Home Builders Association and U.S. Veterans Corps, and U.S. Veterans Corps is a volunteer group for veterans. Andy is the founder and president of that. He's also president of Operation Coming Home. Next to him is Michael Thompson, who's chairman of the Board of Operation Coming Home, and is also the vice president of construction for Pulte Homes. And next to him is Matt Kaufman, who's in Mungo Homes and is going to be the builder of this home. So right now, I'd like to let Andy tell you a little bit about our hero.
Let me point out, Sergeant First Class Eddie Dozer, who served as a Green Beret. This is from camera. He's higher than that. We'll just say it that way. He's the kind of guy that, in his team, that when the Navy SEALs get stuck, that's who saves them. So we're going to advertise him only as a Green Beret, but to know his kind of team, you know, most of the times you guys see deployments, Afghanistan and Iraq, his type of deployments were all over the world. And it's Tom Clancy movie-like. Have you ever seen Clear and Peas a Danger? That's what you can imagine. He is recently married. He is Korean-American, and his wife is from Korea. Her name is Valentina. They love the area. They love that the house is going to be close to, you know, the Bass Pro Shop. They love it. And Eddie had a long career that a lot of things that we couldn't say about. He does not want to leave the military, even though he's probably going to have to. He is paralyzed from mid-chest down, and even though he's been in a lot of deployments, his injury came from just a training accident, just a fluke thing that happened, and he is in a wheelchair. He recently got out of the hospital, but he has thousands of appointments. He will be here tomorrow in town for rehab, and you'll see him on the news about it, basic rehab. He is able to move one toe and a little bit on one foot. He does not give up, and he wants to keep going. He is the kind of guy that's always positive that would, if you called him at two o'clock in the morning, would help you. So I want to thank you guys very much for having us.
Thank you, council, for this opportunity to speak for you tonight. Just a little bit about our company and why Operation Coming Home is so important to us. Like a lot of builders, we started really small. We, Mungo Homes is named after our founder, and Michael J. Mungo. In nineteen fifty-four, he had a sheet rock company and decided to build some homes. And as he started building homes, he was like, I want to give back to my community. And he did. And the stories are legendary in Ermo, South Carolina, about him helping folks and not ever saying anything about it. So other folks mentioned the things that he had done, and he never asked anyone or mentioned anything that he did. So it was very, it came from the heart. So when this company grew and came into North Carolina and Raleigh, that tenet stayed at the core of the culture of our company. So to this day, we put aside a piece of each closing, a portion of each closing, to the Mungo Foundation, and we do outreach into the communities that are so supportive of us. And we've done a lot of great things for children, homes up in Oxford. We've done some, a lot of, fighting domestic violence locally and food banks and different things. So we're always, our team members are always involved in giving back. And when we had the opportunity to work with Operation Coming Home, it was a no-brainer. And our team members were all in and really embraced it. And it's been heartwarming to help a veteran get, you know, get a mortgage-free home. And, you know, our trade partners came together. The support has been wonderful from a company standpoint. This week, we're doing a blessing of the trusses and the framing, so all of our team members going in and writing Bible verses or, you know, words of encouragement on the trusses. We're going to video that and encapsulate that for Sergeant Kim, so he's got that later on to kind of see those messages. And we're going to frame some for him. And just the things that we're doing to really tie into it, hopefully makes his experience a little more, too. He's getting a house, but we want him to really understand that we're appreciative of his service, and it does mean so much to us as a company. So it's a beautiful house, three-bedroom, two-bath ranch, and we're excited to have him move in in November. So, any questions, sir?
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'll very quickly wrap this up. I know you have a full agenda. I'm just going to wrap this up by saying in two thousand eighteen, the town was very, became a part of the process and supported the project. I've been working very closely with town staff on exactly what that looks like, so I'm not going to ask you for specific support at this time, but just ask for your support. And I know that town staff and Operation Coming Home will continue to iron out the details. So thank you for your support in two thousand eighteen. We look forward to your support this year, and I really look forward to seeing you all on November eleventh, one P.M. for our key ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul and team. A very informative presentation. The ceremony itself out there was very touching and moving beyond belief to be there and see it start out. So yes, our town wants to be part of supporting this. As you say, you're in touch with our town manager and town staff. We'll work out the details. It will come back to council, and we hope to support this the way we did the previous one. So thank you very much for what you're doing for your community. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Only because you're on the veterans committee.
Oh, thank you very much. It was a great event, and I'm a Vietnam veteran. And as you can tell, our community is very veteran-oriented, and this town council and all the staff, we support them. We are a Purple Heart community. As you come in, we're very pleased on that. And our veterans' clinic's going to be open in a few weeks out there, which will be good and help Eddie, I'm sure, in some way, fashion or form. But we are a strong military support community, and I have the privilege of serving on the committee, the veterans committee. We do these things. And Paul, I appreciate you adjusting that schedule. You're not talking about it out there, but we'll promote it in the morning time, get all those people out there for that event, and it'll be good. So thank you, guys, for what you've done. I've been to a lot of these key ceremonies, and it's very meaningful. And it's good to see that the guys that had a rough time of it have not been forgotten. So thank you for what you do, and I think you'll find our town most certainly supports all of these efforts, and it means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. And I was just kidding. The other council members can make a comment if they like.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After the event, you and I were talking about Mr. Kane, and he mentioned about something else happening in the city of Raleigh, with some small housing for veterans. And I took that idea. We talked about it. I called him and talked about it. I've already got town staff to send us a map of all town-owned property in Garner. And the manager's out on an educational opportunity right now for the next couple of weeks, but when she gets back, we're going to ask for a meeting to sit down and start talking, get some more information on this, because that is something that really piqued my interest in the way that you helped homeless veterans for small housing. And Raleigh had stepped up, I believe, with some land for eleven units. And I think, Garner, if we can find some land to do that, we can do that, at least that, if not more. So I appreciate that discussion with you. Really planted a seed that we want to follow through with, and looking forward to November eleventh also.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton. Ms. Behringer?
Yes, thank you. I was a teenager during the Vietnam conflict, and that was my introduction to people not appreciating what our veterans did, and it was just horrific. And so I appreciate all the efforts made to support them and to continue to support them for all they have done serving us and for all they have given up. I can never say thank you enough.
Yeah, thanks for everything you do. I just got back from a road trip, and when we travel, we always go to state capitals and things like this. And you see those memorials everywhere, and it's good to see the sort of memorial in action, right? This remembrance, this... This remembrance, this support in action. So hopefully, we can work together to do some more good on top of what you're already doing and scale it up and do some really good things for a lot of people, especially with the VA clinic coming in and stuff like that. We want to put breadth into all the support and eagerness we have and make it real out in the community for folks. So thank you all for what you all do.
I will just add a few things. Mr. Kane, I've known you for a little while, and at the last event we had, was it, I think you mentioned Hero Home 23? That was a great event, absolutely outstanding, well-done. And as you well saw, we had a lot of people talking, well, one person representing a lot of people, reference to affordable housing, the situation we have going on, and you're targeting a veteran who has stood on the wall for this country and made the sacrifices, and now you're providing a great opportunity for this individual to continue to retire from the military, lead the military with dignity and respect, and to have a mortgage-free affordable home. That is such a blessing to have that. And also, my hat's off to the home builders, Mungo Homes as well, to put a portion of your, of the closing costs going towards those endeavors, which is, I think, is a great thing, and I'm looking forward to celebrating with, is it the sergeant? The sergeant, who's the sergeant, who's in special force, who's in special forces now and still wants to serve. I'm looking forward to celebrating with him on that day, I guess.
Quite a resounding endorsement from the council up here, I think. Good job in the past, and thanks for what you're doing now. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is item number H, called the Consent Agenda. There are seven items on there that staff has looked at and digested, council has seen before. Most of these are a more routine matter, but we do have the opportunity to pull any of these items off for further discussion. If council members have seen any item that needs to be removed from the consent agenda for standalone, let me know. If not, we'll push ahead with a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Better.
Second.
Okay. And the tie goes to Mr. Matthews for making the motion, and Mr. Vance for making a second voice vote, all in favor of adopting the consent agenda. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, the consent agenda is adopted unanimously, and it brings us along to item number H on our agenda, which are the public hearings, of which we have several this evening. And I'll read this little disclaimer to remind you what public hearings are. These are legislative hearings, which do not require sworn testimony. However, all persons interested in speaking must sign up with the town clerk. Town staff will present a brief presentation, followed by the applicant, and other persons who wish to comment on the item will be recognized to speak. Council requests groups of individuals with the same position to designate a representative to speak for the group. We'll move right along to public hearing number one, which has to do with the voluntary contiguous annexation petition of the Wilmington Road Industrial. Mr. Trezenberg, our planning director, will be the presenter and will launch us on this discussion. Mr. Trezenberg, it's all yours.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, council members. We do have two annexations for your consideration this evening. The first is Annexation 2418. This is a contiguous annexation to our primary corporate limits, encompassing about 34.93 acres. The petition was submitted by Mr. James Whitaker from Advanced Site Design on behalf of Greg Sandreuter, who is the developer. You see the property here off of Creach Road. Here is Joan Sausage Road, the existing Joan Sausage Commerce Park, the realigned Calabar Street, and the property outlined here. It is currently zoned industrial, so it was a property that was zoned for the use proposed, and staff has recently completed an approval of a subdivision. It was, case number was SB 24006, was approved back on April 15th. And so now we have the annexation petition before us tonight, and Mr. Sandreuter is here if you do have any questions. Otherwise, we do have an ordinance prepared for you here for adoption, if you're so inclined.
And if you would refresh my memory, Mr. Trezenberg, this is something that the council not too long ago looked at for the rezoning and looked at some plans on this.
This one did not have a rezoning. The zoning was already in place.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. That being said, anybody else want to speak related to this one? That you know of? Anybody on your team, or does it develop?
No, no one else from our team. The applicant is here if you do have questions for them.
Okay, so we don't have a presentation from the applicant. At this point, then, we'll recognize council members who wish to ask questions of either the staff or the applicant. Let's start with Mr. Vance this time.
I have no questions.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
None at this time.
Okay.
None.
Okay, no questions. And did we have any individuals signed up to speak on this one?
The applicant's available to answer questions, but no other members of the public have signed up to speak.
Okay. That being the case, then, and since council members have no further questions, I'm going to close the public hearing. And at this point, I'm going to ask council members for a motion, then a second, to approve Ordinance 2025-5345.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Matthews, second by Mr. Singleton. And let's go for a roll-call vote on this very serious issue here, and since we, or is there any more discussion or any more questions we want to bring up on this particular project? Okay, that being the case, then, let's have a roll-call vote, and let's start with the one who made the motion. All in favor, I'm going to ask each one of you if you're in favor of adopting this. Ordinances, please signify by saying aye. If opposed, by nay.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. It's unanimous. All five council members vote to move ahead with this annexation. So that concludes that issue. Thank you very much, Mr. Trezenberg and Mr. Sandreuter, for being here to answer questions. You've done your homework in advance. Your work speaks for itself. This was a good project that supported all the way through. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item number two on public hearings, which is the voluntary satellite annexation petition related to Trion Station Apartments. And again, our presenter is our planning director, Mr. Jeff Trezenberg.
Yes, the second case tonight is Annexation 2510. This is a satellite voluntary annexation for about 18.1 acres up on Creach Road. Here is the site here that you are probably quite familiar with. This is the site of the Trion Point Apartments, which is an affordable housing complex that is under development currently and to which the town had some contributory efforts towards realizing. This petition is coming to you tonight for a possible annexation. The project was originally approved by the council via SUP, a special use permit with site plan, back on December 20th of 2022. And Mr. Ted Halburn is here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. And on the advice of some recent discussions that we've also had regarding annexation, we have added comments here that you'll see on pages 50 and 51 of your agenda packet regarding the five standards for satellite annexations. So I will point out, just for your benefit, that bullet point number two, it actually is closer to the city of Raleigh's primary corporate limits than it is to Garner. However, because we do have an annexation agreement with the city of Raleigh, to which this property is completely on our side, it is eligible for annexation, and you can see the other four criteria there as well. So our recommendation, again, is that if you are so inclined, we do have an ordinance here prepared for your adoption tonight. And again, Mr. Halburn is here if you have any questions for him.
Okay, thank you. This is a project that is very familiar to most of the council. They've worked on it in the past with the rezoning, the approval. A number of us were at the ribbon cutting out there, the groundbreaking, very impressive project, seemed like the right thing at the right place so far as decision. Saying that, I'll ask council members if they have any questions for Mr. Trezenberg or the applicant, and we'll start with Mr. Matthews. Any questions?
No.
Mr. Singleton?
No, sir.
Ms. Behringer?
No.
Mr. Dellinger?
No, sir.
Okay.
Good.
And at this point, we will go to see if any individuals have signed up to speak. I'll call on our town attorney there.
Except the applicant's available for questions, but no members of the public have signed up to speak.
Okay. That being the case, then, we will close the public hearing, and we'll move right along to ask council members if there is a motion to approve Ordinance 2025-5346.
Excuse me, so moved.
Ms. Behringer makes the motion. Mr. Vance seconds that, and since this seemed to be, well, very familiar to the council, I'm going to, again, ask for a roll-call vote, just for clarity, as we go forward. And I'll call on the person who made the motion to vote first in favor, aye, opposed by nay.
Aye.
Mr. Dellinger?
Aye.
Mr. Vance?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
And Mr. Singleton?
Aye.
It unanimously passes. Thank you very much for studying this over the past months and adding this very important project to our list there. So thank you very much. We'll move right along to item number three, which is a Tier One Conditional rezoning request, and this is a little bit different than what we've just been going through in the sense that, number one, it is a Tier One rezoning. We're used to seeing the Tier Two that are a little more specific. This is also very different in the sense that there's some confidentiality here related to this. The actual applicant, landowner, proposed business owner here, at this point, needs to remain confidential, though town council and town staff are well acquainted with the situation, but we will not be publicly disclosing the name of the actual applicant at this point. And saying that, I'm going to turn to our presenter, planner, Mr. Thomas Rail. If you would give us a little background of this as best you can, given the confidentiality.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Mayor, council, and guests. Tonight, I'll present case CZ 25001 titled Project Cougar. Tonight, our applicant is Jeremy Anderson of Thomason Hutton. The owner of the site is NCTH Holdings LLC. This is a Tier One Conditional rezoning request to rezone approximately 127.98 acres from commercial mixed-use, light industrial, and heavy industrial conditional to light industrial conditional. That's LIC 321. The site is located at 5100 Raynor Road. A reminder, this is a Tier One request. It does not have a site-specific master plan. Currently, the site has three different zoning districts. The majority of it is base CMX, which is a mix of commercial, retail, service uses. You can have some office in light industrial uses as well. Commercial mixed-use is designed to have good automobile access and serve those beyond just town limits. Light industrial, the center of the site, provides for a limited range of low-intensity industrial uses. Operations are limited to indoors only. And then a small portion of the site, that heavy industrial conditional, was zoned in 2000 to allow for the development of an RV dealership. The limited written conditions for that relate to the site layout and design. Of course, heavy industrial is more noxious and offensive in nature, and operations can be inside or outside. So the applicant just wants one zoning district for the whole site. Portions of the site also exist within the commercial highway overlay zoning district, which is in our UDO Section 5.14.2. That provides for additional development, design, and landscape standards. So even though those are not written into the conditions, they will apply because of that overlay district. Currently, the site is vacant. It's bounded by 70, Greenfield Parkway, Waterfield Drive, and Raynor Road generally. There's a little bit of floodplain on the site. Existing residential development, there is the Reserve at White Oak Apartments, which are to the northwest, and the Camelot Subdivision, and our ETJ is to the southeast. There's existing industrial businesses in the area. We have Capital Dealership there, the Papa John's and Domino's Distribution Centers, Canteen, Pergo, and Mohawk Industries. So some light industrial uses in the area. For our framework, the site does fall within two activity centers. There is a regional employment center that's centered in South Greenfield Parkway area, and then there's a transit-oriented development that is to the northeast corner of Auburn-Nightdale and US 70. You'll see on this map, there's a number of regional employment centers. That area has great highway access and interstate access. It's designed to be employment-focused in nature, and the recent NC DOT traffic counts from 2024 for 70 there between Raynor and Greenfield Parkway is 45,242 average daily trips. The applicant has proposed two conditions. Our first condition is their permitted use table. They are proposing light industrial conditional. They have limited their uses to 25 out of 44 permitted uses. The entire permitted use table is in your staff report. I've broken it up into two slides here. The majority of the uses they're proposing are in the commercial office, retail, service use category. Some of those do require special use permits. Their number-two condition is that office uses will be located in the northwest corner of the project parcel. Now, we don't have a site-specific master plan as part of this plan. The applicant does have something they will show you after my presentation, and that condition speaks to that. TIA was conducted in January of this year by DRMP. The calculations were off of 351,000 square feet of general office use. Recommendations from the TIA included two new accesses onto South Greenfield Parkway and Waterfield Drive, two each, including any turn lanes. You can see that here in that recommendation. Our traffic engineer is here. They can speak a little more in-depth about that if you have questions later. The site is expected to generate 3460 new one-way average trips. Weekday morning peak hours of 432 trips in, 59 out, and weekday evening peak hours, 80 trips in, and 391 out. Of course, this is a Tier One rezoning request. We really only have the comprehensive plan to use for our evaluation for staff, but based on their permitted use table and the condition offered, we can evaluate some metrics. There were 123 properties and occupants within the notification radius. The neighborhood meeting was held in November at the Garner Senior Center. There were four people in attendance. You'll see the full neighborhood meeting packet in your staff report. There were just a couple of questions about that. For our growth framework consistency, we were able to evaluate four criteria. They did all rate as strongly consistent, so we found a considerable finding of strong support. The light industrial zoning choice rated favorably, as well as the non-residential building types, both office and industrial. Overall, we had strong consistency with the development intensity metrics of the site. For land use and community character consistency, Chapter Three of the comp plan, we really only found three that we were able to evaluate. Support was given because this is a new employment opportunity and also that we're not reclassifying existing activity centers. This is a regional employment center. There was a negative rating given to the lack of mixed uses. There are not uses, including living in the area, but there are some workshop and play uses on that list. So there are no strong non-supporting criteria. Staff can find a general finding of consistency at this time. Based on public feedback, council feedback, adjustments can be made. So tonight, our next steps would be to finish conducting our, and closing our public hearing tonight. We would refer the case to the planning commission for their findings of plan consistency and their recommendation to approve or deny the rezoning. And then, council, you would receive this again for your findings of reasonableness and the decision to approve or deny. Staff is here for any questions. The applicant team is here, including traffic engineer. So they're here for questions, if you have any, and when they do speak, I have a plan of theirs that I will put on the screen for you.
Well, thank you very much for the information. Just to refresh council's memory, we have looked at this in detail a time Just to refresh council's memory, we have looked at this in detail a time or two, knowing who the applicant actually is. We've looked at it and our mission tonight is if we choose to refer this on to the planning commission, this is the public hearing, the next step, refer it to the planning commission for further review and their recommendation regarding the plan consistency. So at this point, we'll take any questions from council members that they might have for our presenter or the applicant team if they were here. And let's start with Mr. Vance is in down here. Any questions for staff or the team?
No questions.
Ms. Dellinger?
No questions.
Ms. Behringer?
No questions.
Mr. Singleton?
I've got a question, but what I'm going to ask a question about wasn't presented on the screen. It's all enough I can ask it. They found it here. Well, I was just looking at it. It's on here. There was a schematic drawing included in our package, yes. But you didn't show here.
It's not an official, yeah, I could show it if you'd like.
Right, yeah, I just was going to ask a question in that. It showed where things could be. And then it talked about, and we did a traffic plan, and it's got an area, projected area that could be used for something to lay down or other things that may go there, something to be stored there. That one, well, that is just projected future, I'm sorry, future. So is that included in the traffic study or is that not having already impacted the traffic study? I'm assuming reading between the lines here, it may not, but I don't know. So I didn't know if that, any future development is included in the current traffic study.
I will let the traffic engineer speak to that. I believe that the square footage and the use category chosen was conservative in nature to project a higher traffic.
Just curious, it said the word future in it.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Singleton?
Not yet, maybe.
Over there.
We can, yeah. Well, Mr. Matthews, do you have a question? And then we could have them all speak or?
I have no questions.
Okay, I'm sorry to ask, but.
I was just, I'm just asking if what you've talked about or what is a potential layout, all that potential, what may be square footage is included in the current traffic study? Nothing that says future is included because it may not ever be there, correct?
I'll invite the applicant to step forward and speak. They may not have signed in on the sheet, but okay, good.
Ronald Stevenson with DRMP, 5808 Farringdon Place in Raleigh. And the, so the TIA accounted for, I think as staff showed, that's 350 some odd thousand square feet of general office, which can include a variety of different uses. Some of those may need some outdoor space or some of them are all, you know, traditional, which you think is traditional office, but it does include, it's a category of general office, which means it can accommodate, you know, different types of uses. So it's just sort of a, I wouldn't say an average, but it's, it accommodates various types of uses.
Okay, so all that's covered in your plan, you're attracting the TIA. Very good, thank you.
Yes, a little different. Were there any other questions from council? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask our town attorney. Has anyone else signed up to speak about this?
Yeah, so only the applicant team has signed up and they're available to answer questions, but no members of the public have signed up to speak.
Okay, that being the case then, and questions have been asked by council, that we will now close the public hearing and we'll move ahead to asking for a motion and a second to refer this to the planning commission for further review.
Move to refer CZ251001 to the planning commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Vance and a second by Mr. Singletonary. Is there any other discussion or any other comments on this particular item? Hearing none, let's call again for a roll call vote for clarity. And let's start with Mr. Vance this time. In favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay, okay, good, aye.
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 Okay, unanimous again, okay, a positive report. Good homework has been done in the past, a lot of information has been shared. There'll be a lot more information to be shared and reviewed going forward to the planning commission and then back to the council here for some final approval. So thank you for working with us. From what council has seen, clearly we're enthusiastic about this project and believe it will be a real asset. So we're looking forward to y'all being able to make the announcement of who it is and then the community will be excited as well, I believe. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we move ahead now to item J on the agenda, which is new or old business. And I think there is no new or old business at this time, okay. But we always have our favorite committee reports from council members. And let's start with Mr. Matthews and see which council members might have a committee report to make.
I have nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Behringer? Mr. Dellinger? Mr. Vance?
No, sir.
Wow, boy, we're moving right along. Well, I know we have a manager report and our interim town manager, our acting town manager, while our main town manager is way getting more highly educated on municipal affairs, our assistant town manager, Mr. John Hodges.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. You have the Talk of the Town report in your packet. I'll review a few of the highlights for that. Garner Police Department is partnering with a local nonprofit on a school supply drive. These school supplies are going to be targeted to schoolchildren affected in western North Carolina from Hurricane Helene. Supplies can be dropped off at Garner PD until August 1st. The Public Art Committee has made a commitment to purchase a Nobel Winds bench that will be painted by a local artist and there's a link in your report to an example of that. And Ms. Behringer can provide additional detail, I'm sure, if anyone has questions about that. We do have an economic development tour planned for council that's going to be on Thursday, July 24th, beginning at 8:30 until 10:30. If you've not already confirmed your attendance, please contact Deputy Clerk Rebecca Murray so that we can make final plans for that. We also have a Leadership Garner Town Hall Day. You may recall us mentioning the new program that the Chamber of Commerce is doing that is Leadership Garner. They have a cohort of 10 participants who are learning more about how our community functions. And we're hoping that that program is going to help us in growing and recruiting new leaders within our community. One of the sessions that the town staff is helping coordinate is Town Hall Day. That's going to be on August 14th from 8 until 12. We would love to have any council members who can participate that day. We will be given a general overview of local government. We also have a facilitator from the School of Government who's going to come and lead the group through a budgeting simulation called Budgetopolis. Some of you may recall participating in that. We may be going back about 12 years ago now, but it was a while back that we did that. Since we can accommodate a larger group than the cohort for Leadership Garner, we're including any council members who'd like to attend. And we're also asking the Chamber of Commerce's leadership team on their board of directors to participate in that as well. So please coordinate that again with Deputy Town Clerk Rebecca Murray. Also, another partnership with the Chamber of Commerce is the Annual Impact Conference. That's going to be on Wednesday, August 20th from 9 to 11:30 at the GPAC. This is a program that we've been producing annually with the Garner Chamber for a number of years now and with the Economic Development Department. And you can coordinate your attendance with Rebecca and we will be doing the registrations for that as a group. So please reach out to Rebecca with that. And then lastly, just wanted to mention that Aprilwood, our Downtown and Economic Development Administrator, is hosting monthly walking tours of downtown. The next one will be on August 14th at 5:15 PM. So if you're interested in that, please join her then. Or if there's, you'd like to refer that to anyone who may be interested in learning more about our downtown program. They've had some good turnout from people reading about it in their newsletter and finding out in other ways. And they've had a number of people participate in those monthly walkarounds. Lastly, we have your Garner Info Monthly Analytics. If you have any questions about those, please let us know. As you'll see, this time of year, which is typical, our tall grass and weeds is one of our largest categories, followed by trash and solid waste. As I frequently remind council, in addition to these numbers that you see here, our staff is out proactively dealing with many more of these type cases than you ever see coming through Garner Info. So tall grass season is keeping our team busy and they're doing an exceptional job, being proactive at taking care of issues before they ever make it to Garner Info. If you have any questions about the statistics or anything in Talk of the Town, please let me know.
Thank you. And before we move along to the rest of your Talk of the Town, I just want to reinforce a couple of things that you mentioned there, Mr. Hodges. One is this Garner Info app. I just want to be a big promoter of that. People say, well, who do I call if a sign is down? Who would I call if there seems to be a junk car? Who do I call if there's a big pothole? The simple answer is the Garner Info app. You can go on there very quickly and easily and anonymously, report one of these issues and it will get routed to the appropriate department. It becomes a permanent part of the record and people's job performance is evaluated by how quickly their department responds and gets this handled. So I really encourage everyone to use this Garner Info app instead of just calling a neighbor or calling a council member even. Get it into the system, seems to be very effective as indicated by the results that we got there. Also, I want to double down on the economic development tour. And we may get in cars and ride around, we may sit in the conference room and look at the big screen. But I would certainly encourage all of our council members, I think most of us have signed up for it, but please take this opportunity to continue to learn. We have so many interesting things going on. Even if you've seen it before and heard all about them, you learn something new every time. And our council has been unbelievably cooperative in doing their homework, things like this, and meeting with these other developers. They do a lot of behind-the-scenes work that you don't see. For example, the Project Cougar, they've been studying that. Some of these economic development activities, been studying that, participating. In fact, I think we have a closed session later this evening to talk about one of those. So that being said, thanks to the council member for all their hard work and doing their homework, saving time in here. That's why things go so smoothly. Back to you, John.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, we'll recognize David Beck, our Finance Director for the Quarterly Financial Report.
Good evening. Just wanted to make a few comments about the quarterly financial report that you have in your packet and then free to answer any questions you may have about that as well. This is the fourth quarter report for the end of the fiscal year. These numbers are definitely preliminary, so keep that in mind as you look at the report. We still have quite a few transactions to record in the fiscal year that ended June 30th. But overall, things look really well financially for the town. We should end up with a surplus for the fiscal year. We still have three months of sales tax revenue to record, which is not reflected in the report you have. We've received one month of those three since that report was prepared and that was another really good month for the town as far as sales tax collections go. We've been really fortunate this fiscal year that our sales tax collections have remained really high as some of our neighbors and others around the state are seeing those taper off or even decline from the prior year. But ours have been really strong and continue that, have continued through the fiscal year. So just wanted to point that out and again, just let you know, these are preliminary. The audit report will have the final numbers for the fiscal year and that work is underway with our auditors as they are already starting to look at things and we're sending them data and information to evaluate. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm glad to answer any questions, Councilman.
Thank you. And let's go down for Mr. Matthews, see if he has any questions regarding this. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Behringer or Ms. Dellinger?
Yeah, just a quick question on the revenue and expenditures. And you said the numbers are in flux and there's the revenue over expenditures number. How much do you think that number is going to fluctuate, up or down, based on what's left to sort of finish out the fiscal year?
It's pretty hard to pinpoint because I don't know exactly. It's harder on the expenditure side because there are still things coming in that are, you know, purchases made in June, work that was performed in June. But I would expect that number to go up based on what's in that preliminary report, just because of sales tax. So like I said, there's three months of sales tax to record. Typically, we have more revenue to accrue than we do the expenditures at the end of the year.
And that, those funds go into the general fund or fund balance, is that the default position?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vance.
No questions, sir?
No.
Okay, excellent, thank you, Mr. Beck, anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. And next we have Leah Harrison, our Engineering Director, who will give us the quarterly capital project update.
Good evening. All right, so you have the full update report in your agenda packet. As usual, I'll just go through some highlights and then if anyone has any questions, we can dig into anything else a little bit further. We actually have a lot of updates this quarter, a lot of things that are moving forward, so that's exciting. Starting out in transportation, we have the Aversboro Road and Garner Road sidewalk project that is currently out to bid with a bid opening date of August 8th. So we anticipate that you'll see that at the first September council meeting for award of that bid, hoping to start construction probably mid to late September on that project to finish up in early, early next year. The Pearl Street and Parker Street Improvement Project, we have awarded that bid. Construction actually started yesterday, so not, not a whole lot to see yet, but they are getting, getting going out there. This bid opening was particularly exciting for us because we actually got eight bids and our winning bid came in about $100,000 below our engineers estimate. So this is definitely a turn from what we've seen in bids in the last several years, which is, which is good to see. We anticipate this project being finished just before Christmas time likely, about five months of construction. The Random Mill Streetscape and Parking Improvement Project, that's the other project right downtown. That one, we just opened bids on July 8th for that project. And this one will come to you for award on August 5th. We had fewer bids on this one, only two actually, but our low bid still came in under our engineers estimate. So that was good to see as well. This has a nine-month construction duration and we anticipate construction to start mid to late August. The 2025 street resurfacing bid will also be on your August 5th agenda for a board. So we're going to have a busy construction filled summer and fall, it looks like. We had five bids for that. This contract, in addition to resurfacing of several neighborhood streets, also includes construction of a raised crosswalk on Fifth Avenue that is going to be a new traffic calming approach for us. So that will be similar to a speed table, but wider and flatter on the top so that there's actually a painted pedestrian crossing on top of the raised area. Because we do have a lot, it's a unique situation where there are a lot of pedestrians crossing that street because of the businesses on both sides. So we are excited to have that as one of our first traffic calming ventures with our newly allocated traffic calming funding. As you all are very well aware, the White Oak Roundabout is under construction. And I actually have a video for you on this one, as long as I can make it work. So Kyle in Communications was able to get some drone photos and videos for us. So this was July 8th, so last week. A little more has happened since then, but it just gives you a good overview of the progress so far on this project. So currently, our contractor is ahead of schedule. Over the past six weeks, they've completed most of the site grading, installed the curb for the median, placed the truck apron and the storm pipe and plan to begin paving in mid-July. We are still working through provisions for a temporary signal at Bryan and White Oak as part of this project with NC DOT. We are very hopeful that because of the pace that the contractor is working at, that we will be able to have the road closure lifted before school begins at the end of August. But we anticipate having, or we're hoping to have provisions for the temporary signal in place in case that is not able to happen because the traffic will increase at that, at that point.
And thank you for your email alerting us to some of the updates and changes for that project. Greatly appreciated.
Yeah, it's a lot of information, but I think having all the information is usually more helpful when you're answering questions from other people than not having enough, so. when you're answering questions from other people than not having enough, so. All right, moving on to Parks Projects. The Garner Recreation Center Playground you had on your agenda tonight for award. So that project is moving forward to begin construction soon. The White Deer Park Improvements, that includes the new playground at White Deer Park as well as the splash pad. The playground project is expected to go out to bid this summer, so you will see that one before too long here. The splash pad portion of those improvements was done as a design-build contract, so that contract has already been awarded and has moved through design. Both of those have approval from the town's Technical Review Committee to move forward toward construction. In addition, of course, Jürgen Park Phase 1 is under construction. That construction is approximately a third complete. Over the past quarter, contractors have completed site grading, stormwater, infrastructure, and retaining wall construction. On facilities, an update on the Garner Police Department steps. The direction that we are moving is before replacing the, the steps at that facility, we are installing a second entrance door that will be a public entrance door that is ADA compliant. So currently, you don't have an ADA push button or anything on the front door of that facility. So on the side, at the top of the ramp, we are going to install a second door. This will also give us the benefit of being able to use that door during construction of the steps so that we don't have to route the public through the secure area within the police department building. That contract is, has been, a contractor has been selected for the door portion, so that work should begin probably within the next month, followed by the replacement of the police department steps. And then Town Hall Annex, of course, is under construction as well. We are approximately 70% complete on that project. We've hit a few surprises along the way, but they've all been overcome as we go. So we're still anticipating a September completion and hope to have a late September, early October move-in date to that facility. And then the last page of your update is NCDOT projects in our area. One notable update is we now have two under construction. In addition to the 50 Bridge at 70, DOT has started construction on the improvements at 50 and Timber. This project includes extending a lane on northbound 50 from Timber up to the next intersection. So instead of that, that right turn lane dead-ending onto Timber, it will continue on. So a much smaller project, but that construction started in early July. And then there are several projects in planning and design highlighted are all the dates that have changed since the last time you've seen this report, which is most of them. So everything has been pushed back for let dates by a few months or in some cases more. But just to keep tabs on where those are, just updates for your information. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have about any of these.
Wow, that's a lot of information. Council members, any questions on details or comments on that?
Yeah, I have a question. Do we know yet what is going to be done with, excuse me, the Little White House on the Jürgen Park property?
I don't think we have direction for sure. Parks and Recreation had a contract, find where it is in here. I believe you will see something on that soon.
Ms. Harrison, I can comment, I can comment on that, or Maria can comment, she's here.
So with fiscal year 25 CIP dollars, we commissioned a structural review of both the Jürgen Homestead and the Dupree House. We have the report, will be edited by the consultant. We got it drafted in July, early in the month. And once we get the report with the potential cost of rehabilitation, we'll bring that forward to council. Our intent is to preserve the house, hopefully find an alternative use for it so it can continue to be reflective of the history of the Jürgen property as well as become, I mean, it's a bit of a landmark for our community, so we certainly hope that we'll be able to find an adaptive use for it.
Does, can I ask this question, or do you know at this point, would that include moving the house?
I don't know that that is an option that we have considered. I think for historic preservation purposes, it's usually preferred if there's an adaptive use that the property remains on the site. Now, the Dupree House was already moved once. It used to be the original Homestead where the Jürgen Farmhouse is now. But I don't know that we have envisioned, again, for historic preservation purposes, optimally would remain on site.
And just, I ride by that spot almost three times a day, and it just makes me nervous seeing that house sitting on the edge of where the grading has been done. I'm afraid it's going to fall off.
So there actually, there is a retaining wall protecting the house. That will be part of a permanent retaining wall to make sure that the road and the house have a clear separation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I don't, just a, a question and a recommendation. So for the projects that are listed here, there's a project budget. And I'm not sure how your requisition and pay, but it'd be handy to see if they're kind of on budget or going off budget. I know usually it's done in the, in the text, in the narrative piece. But it might be helpful to kind of see, as I get closer to being completed, how close they are to their budget. And early on, it's harder to do, but maybe it's at 75%. It can kind of be on budget, under budget, over budget. Doesn't have to be a specific number, but just so I have an idea that, you know, it sounds like they're trending in the right direction, actually. But it'd be kind of nice to have just one line that says, as it gets closer, under, over, and then, you know, close out it, what it closes.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. We certainly internally have our, this is the budget that's been allocated, and then this is our estimate that keeps changing as you go, so we can find a way to present both of those.
Yeah, and just like, once it gets near the end, because it's, early on, it's kind of, can be hard to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to say thank you for the drone progress. We were beginning to use those when I retired at DOT. A great way of looking at projects in the current status. And I would like to recommend doing that with future projects as well, such as Jürgen Park. We could see how that was going on and others that we can't get onto the grounds and see on, but I'd say continue with that. And it also appears, as I look through the projects, that the ones that we require federal fundings are moving forward. The funding is available for the one in particularly the Rand Mill Road parking lot, so that's good to go, moving forward.
Yes, yes. Yeah, so far, we have not been notified of any impacts to funding on our projects.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Excellent. And thank you for the comment on the drone footage. They always say that a picture is worth a thousand words. If that's true, then a drone video is worth a thousand pictures. So, so thank you for doing that. That tells us a whole lot. Other comments, questions?
Yes, Ms. Harrison, on the project she planning to design on DOT. The US 70th Timber, you know, convert the grade interchange. It was going to be a diamond interchange at one time. The previous council met, gosh, eight or 10 years ago, over the Capitol Church, a big meeting. So that's been, that's been pushed back all the way to 2040, currently.
Right, which 2040 is really the latest date that they list. So I, I take that a little bit as if we don't know. They, quite frankly, so I haven't heard anything additional on plans or if anything's changed because I think it's been kind of put on the.
It's gone from, we're going to start in 2020 or 2021 to 2025 to 2029 to whatever, now it's at 2040. So we're not going to see that happen anytime soon.
Most likely that is correct.
Just, well, I mean, that was just one, that was just a priority, and now it's really been pushed back. Also, a little disappointed to see that the Van Dore Springs and 70 Bridge has been pushed back to 2029 because if the Highway 50 project lasts another 18 months, there's six minutes into it. You know, that's, I would, I would have hoped maybe that one would have been right behind it, but obviously that's not going to happen as it currently is, and I know that's a lot in due to funding. So thanks for the information. I appreciate it. Just the 70 Timber one, you know, again, we met eight, 10 years ago, and it was going to be done by now, and now it's not even planned. We may not, we may never see it, but anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
Listen, I've been here long enough to remember when they were going to have to fly over. And we went into closed session after closed session after closed session about the flyover.
And we haven't flown over yet.
And we hadn't flown over yet. That's why there's the extra property on that one side, that's where the flyover was going to go, but anyway.
Thank you for this.
That was a long time ago.
Historical perspective.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Matthews, observation?
Yeah, on a historical note, if I can segue off of that one. The, Ms. Behringer brought up the Little White House out there, and I know it's part of, going to be done something weird. At least my understanding is if, if we're going to move it, if that's one of the options, I'm just saying, the time to move it is before we get all those fields done and everything out there. And I would think if, if we're going to move it, and I'm not trying to get ahead of you, but now would be the time to move it before we get all those fields laid out and the grass grown and the lights and the fences and all that stuff up because that would have to, have to be not a, a good time to move that house. So if we're going to move it, now would be the time. And are we considering potentially moving it up to the big house for that historical area right in there? Just don't know. I'm just, I'm fishing here.
Yeah, yeah, it, it sounds like we're just starting to look at the report the consultant came up with to look at those options. So I think once that is finalized and we can take a better look at that, then we'll know.
You know, for us cost-wise and destruction of what we've done so far, you would think now would be the time to move it, while it's just dirt out there right now. Because I remember when we moved to Depot and the, and the caboose, there's a lot involved with moving that stuff. So just a thought, plant that seed. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Back to you, John.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Just a couple of other things I wanted to mention, Mayor and Council. This week and late last week, you've received a number of calendar invitations from Deputy Town Clerk Rebecca Murray. We had previously communicated to council that she has taken on a single point of contact for scheduling for council. So you're beginning to see a number of those things. A couple of those things that you received invitations for, I just wanted to mention briefly tonight to make sure you're aware that we are doing them. One is bringing back a board and commission orientation. So we had done these in the past during COVID times that really went away, and we handled those things differently after we came back, but we felt like it was an important thing to revive and bring back. So all of the people that are newly appointed by the HR Committee and approved by council to board and position, commit, positions, we are going to host an orientation for them. So I believe that is a calendar invite that's on your calendar so that you're aware of it. We'll be doing that on, I believe, Wednesday, the 30th of July in the early evening. Also, wanted to let you know we do have a date identified that we will be hosting a candidate orientation. And as soon as the filing for office is closed, we will be sending a date out to everyone who has filed for office locally, and we'll be hosting that candidate orientation. And then another item that you received, an invitation to, is Celebrate Garner. And so this is going to be a new event where we will bring back our appreciation that, a dinner that we've done previously for folks who have cycled out of Board and Commission service. And we're going to be combining that with our James R. Stevens Award and making the celebratory event out of that that will be held at the GPAC. So you have a placeholder on your calendar for late August for that. Stay tuned for more formal invitation information, but we wanted to share with you a little more detail about all of these calendar invitations that you've received recently. And if you have any questions about those or anything else from tonight's manager report, I'll be happy to answer those.
Wow, a lot going on, a lot coming up. Thanks for the good work all of you are doing now. Anything else there on manager reports?
No, sir. That's all.
Well, I know we have an attorney report. There's at least one item on there. We're all just on pins and needles waiting to hear.
Yes, I'm smiling a lot because after two rather challenging months, I'm pleased to report that our legal department is fully staffed. And I'd like to formally introduce Morgan Pierce as our new Assistant Town Attorney. She comes to us from Orange County where she worked as a staff attorney in their county attorney's office for the past three years. She's also a recent graduate of NC State and Campbell Law School. We'd like to all welcome Ms. Pierce to our team.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So excited to be here with you all.
Have we overworked you already? You've had two long days.
Not at all.
Easy for you to say. Makes me tired just to see you come in early and stay late. Thanks for your extra effort here.
Absolutely.
You're on the crash course. Thank you very much. Very excited. Anything else, Ms. Jones?
No, just, just to remind you, we have some closed sessions this evening.
Who could forget? We do have council reports other than the committee reports. Let's start with Mr. Vance, see if he has any other items you wanted to talk about this evening.
No other items, no.
Mr. Dallinger?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Behringer?
Just a question, if we can find out again, when do we expect to get the report from Central Pines on our affordable housing status currently?
I think our scope of work with them was to receive that in late August, and we've asked them if, if there's any way that they can complete that earlier in the month. But they do have through the end of August to complete that work. So if we're able to deliver that any sooner, we'll be glad to share that with you.
Okay. And I'd just make a comment. I did meet with Ms. Cardenas a couple of weeks ago and got a wealth of information and explanation I'm still processing.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. See other council members?
Yes, sir. And you'll be happy to know that while we were here, I did turn in, use Garner Info to turn in a tall grass report. It's like, addressed, it's memorized in my brain. It was easy to get down. It's been turned this into habitual offender, so anyway, I did use it. I will not, this was hard to explain on the Garner Info. Had a citizen call me hitting at the intersection of Van Dore and Garner Road, continuing north, go past Brown LP as you're approaching the new townhome development that's going to be built on the right. They're, they've done road construction. I don't know if that's the final layer of asphalt, but it's got a couple of dandy dips in it. I mean, that'll get your attention. And, and it may be getting another layer of asphalt. I don't know, but it appears to be even with the curb. So if we could look at that on the northbound lane as you're approaching the entrance, the first entrance into that development, which has not had any townhomes started yet.
Okay, great. So Ms. Harrison has thumbs up that she'll have the appropriate member of her team that's coordinating on that project to check on that tomorrow.
Now, maybe it's there to be a, a, a traffic calming device that'll get your attention. I want to re-ask again, I did this last year, and I'll report again, that at August 9th at Garner United Methodist, there will be another back-to-school bash where they're expecting at least 1,200 kids to come. And so anybody who wants to volunteer, it'll be from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. They have designed this different this year. It's going to be a timed entry, ticket required. We'll see how that goes. That means you cannot go in until your time's available. And all of us can be inside. There might be any outside this year because of the heat and so forth. They're trying to refrain from that, so they're trying to bring people in groups. So if you'd like to volunteer, they will certainly be looking for volunteers for that. My wife asked me today, you are going to work, aren't you? Well, she didn't ask me. She said, you are going to work, aren't you? So anyway, it'll be a very busy time. It's one of the biggest events we have here in Garner for that many, that large a group of kids to come get school supplies. So I just want to report that August 9th at Garner Methodist. And I'd also like to thank all of you for all your kind words. With my father's passing, I sincerely appreciate it. I'm wearing my NC State tie tonight because my daddy went to school at NC State, graduated and played football at NC State. So that's why I'm wearing my State tie tonight. But anyway, his, oh, the visitation on Thursday, and his service will be down in Little Washington on Saturday. So I appreciate your kind words.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Singleton. Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. In regards to the Methodist, I had the privilege of being there last year, and it was quite an event. I was taken aback how many people showed up and how well organized it was. And a lot of people went to, it was hot that day, too.
It was hot.
And, but it was a good event. And just to, not in need it, but just to comment on the 3rd of July celebration, as usual, it was big. It was great, and the weather was cooperative. If you had a rainbow in, right at the beginning, but that, that, that went away. And, but the great music from the Embers as well as the symphony and fireworks, a great, great job to our Parks and Recs Department and everybody on your team. And it was, it was good to be there, and the police did a great job getting everybody out of there. I got to talk to them about Navin Lane a little bit later, and my phone has been ringing off the hook. People couldn't get out of their drives, but we'll fix that. But that's due to good attendance.
Not bad.
But great job.
Absolutely. It was absolutely quite the event. I've gotten letters and emails from people from way out of town, as far away as Durham. They came to this and thought it was the best they'd ever seen. It went smoothly. My hats off to police, Public Works, everybody who had a hand in it, and of course Parks and Rec, the management. So a great event, something to be proud of. Saw a lot of smiling children that day. Never seen more bouncy houses. It was great. So that concludes our regular meeting. I think there is a call for a closed session. I think there is a call for a closed session this evening, and I think there's a special motion we have to make. Will you direct us, Ms. Jones?
Yes, so staff has requested a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute's Section 143-318.11A4 to discuss economic development. And I believe Councilman Vance is requesting a closed session pursuant to subsection A6 to discuss the performance reviews for the town manager and town attorney.
Okay, so I'll ask council members for a motion and a second.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Matthews, second by Mr. Singleton. And let's take a voice vote. All those in favor of moving to a closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Let's move to a closed session, and we will come back as soon as we're finished to wrap it up over here. Thank you all for coming tonight, sorry you can't go with us. Thank you.
Okay, we return to the regular session and we'll call our town attorney to give us a brief report of what was covered in the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town council met in closed session with staff to discuss certain economic development projects and gave general direction to staff, but no official votes were taken. Town council also met with the town attorney in closed session to discuss the upcoming performance evaluation process for the town manager and town attorney. But again, no official votes were taken.
Thank you for that very brief condensed version. Progress was made, information was shared, and I think that concludes our agenda for this evening. If there's no further objections, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Let's move in a second, and let's go straight to the vote. All in favor of adjournment please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Good vote. Meeting adjourned.